...two thousand and fifteen, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Herb Anaro?
Here.
Danny?
Yes, here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Rankin? President Wallace?
Here.
First item we have on our agenda this evening under the committee, the whole meeting, is under the Finance Committee, Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny?
Yes, the, basically it's discussing the item for implementing the, the food and beverage tax. And, that's right. Yeah, right. And, I'm going to ask Jeff if you'd give us a little background on this, please?
I'd be happy to, trustee Danny. At the last meeting or the meeting before that, staff was asked to take a look at a food and beverage tax, and we did some research on a food and beverage tax. We looked at the amount of revenue that a food and beverage tax would generate based upon a one, two, three, or four percent tax. In calendar year 2014, we collected $284,000 in sales tax from what's called drinking and eating establishments. And that is a classification under the Illinois Department of Revenue that looks at these broad areas of how sales tax is generated in each community. So we estimate that one percent would generate about $284,000. Tony Fraden, Community Development, clarified that the village has forty-three businesses that are currently classified as drinking and eating places under the state's sales tax criteria. Based on the aforementioned, we can assume a one percent food and beverage tax, again, would generate 284,000, and two percent would double that to 568. Three percent would generate 852,000, and four percent would generate a little bit over 1.1 million. We also did some research, we looked at some similar communities that have a food and beverage tax. Hanover Park has a three percent tax and generates, again, a little bit over a million dollars. Streamwood has a two percent tax, generated 1,192,000. Villa Park has a one and a half percent tax, generated 537,000, and Glendale Heights has a one percent tax and generated about 470,000. I have done a little research, the village of Streamwood, again, does this. I, for your information, included the remittance form that Streamwood uses. This is a tax that would be administered by the village and collected by the village. And I also included the ordinance that Streamwood uses to implement this tax. Trustee Hopkins did ask staff to take a look at the history of the electric and gas tax. In fiscal 2013, the village collected 1,482,000 based upon ten months of collection. And then in 2014 and 2015, we collected a little bit over 1.75 million. Now going forward, in 2016, we've reduced that, the electric tax, by about $300,000. In your packet, I also included what I'll call other revenue comparisons from a number of similar communities. I've broken that down on the left-hand side of the column there to show what municipalities have what types of other revenues included, such as the food and beverage tax. And again, for your information, we do have the village of Streamwood's information for your review. So with that, I guess I'll throw it out for any discussion that the board might have.
Technically, Jeff, we really, even on this list of other revenue, we really don't have the electric utility tax anymore, is that correct?
Half of it.
Half of it.
Half of it, okay, all right. The question I have, you make a comment here that the, unfortunately, the state does not separate what's generating food and beverage. My question is, what exactly do they mean by food? We're talking about taxing, first thing that comes to my mind, I'm thinking, oh, this is just restaurants, we just eat out. But, but is it actually point-of-sale places like Jewel or?
No.
It's not that kind of food?
Not prepared foods. Sorry, prepared foods.
Prepared?
Prepared foods is what that classification is.
So wouldn't be that we, if we did something like this, it wouldn't go on to the grocery bills?
No.
Of the, of every person?
Restaurants, yeah.
Yeah, restaurants, right.
Okay, just prepared food, all right.
Well, I like this tax a lot better than the utility tax, I should say the gas utility tax. I think the gas utility tax is a necessity. I don't think that this board should tax something that's a necessity. I think if you go and have food and beverage, I think it's a luxury, and I think that we should focus more on that. That's where I pretty much stand on it.
How does, how does this tax affect the actual restaurants and businesses? Does it just something that's passed on to the individual patron of those businesses? Or does it in some way affect the business themselves?
We would assume that the business would pass that on to the?
It's a business decision.
Yeah.
It would just show up as, as the tax portion, if it wouldn't be broken out as a separate account, correct?
When the village receives it?
If we had, if this were to be implemented, and we had a?
That's a good question, I'm not so sure how the business would break that out.
Well, I know I've, I've eaten in, in some of these communities before, and I've never seen anything that was separate, it just all showed up as sales tax.
I think in Hanover, if you look at your bill, even at McDonald's in Hanover Park, you see extra tax.
You do, okay.
It's 10% total, which is pretty significant.
And then the business is responsible for remitting the four monthly back to the village to pay for the tax.
And then they have to go through, there's another step to that, I believe, because the village, or the business, especially the smaller businesses that are restaurants, have to go through all of the minutia, like Streamwood has a form here they have to fill out, so they have to keep track of all of this, and they probably pay it quarterly, I would guess.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're like the filter, the business is like the filter. So smaller businesses are going to have to not only collect that sales tax, or whatever they collect for the state, they're going to have to collect another line item, which is going to have to be put in a pot, and then that's going to be, have to be given to the village.
Okay.
So it's not going to just come automatically, they're going to be writing a check to the village.
I wonder, I wonder, as I look at this, is how this would affect, there's probably no way to know, how this would affect the patrons patronizing these restaurants if all of a sudden their food bill is escalated, and they decide, well, I'm just not going to eat out as much, or I'm not going to drink as much. Now, in a roundabout way, we're hurting the business by taking, taking, you know, service away from them. Of course, there's no way to prove that that's going to happen, but I guess in theory it could. And then, if I understand this correctly, for this amount of taxation, it would be a select amount of people paying to have this money come into the village. However, the benefits of this taxation, of these select group of people that eat out a lot in businesses in Bartlett, would still be spending their money, we would receive, be receiving money that everybody else in the village would benefit from. So that makes sense? In other words, everybody gets their streets paved, you know, everybody gets the various things we do as a village because they pay a portion of their gas or a portion of their electric as taxation that funds the village to get these done. But now, it would just be down to the people who, at least in this situation, the people who eat out a lot.
Well, and it gives you the opportunity to collect revenue from people who don't live in Bartlett.
And that would be a smaller percentage, I would guess.
Considering out of downtown areas now, I don't think we have a lot of people from outside the area coming down here.
I understand what trustee Cameron is getting at. Essentially, you're, what you're saying on a food and beverage tax, and I also certainly understand what trustee Hopkins is saying, but what trustee Cameron, I think, and I'm not going to speak for you, I believe if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying the people that have, that have the ability to go out and eat are going to be paying for some village services for those that have none.
Exactly.
The one other thing that caught my eye, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but we'd have to generate almost, or enact almost four percent of a food and beverage tax that will equal 1.1 million, give or take, and currently, with the electric half and the gas tax that we currently have, the utility tax, in 2015, we collected 1.7 mil. With a four percent tax, that's almost a $600,000 shortfall, where are we going to make that up? Or how are we going to make that up?
You know, I think the board, last budget year, took the approach of phasing out the electric and utility tax.
I understand that.
Right.
But it's in effect right now?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, then we're losing, in essence, you know, if it is phased out, that's 1.7 that's gone by the wayside, and we have to generate a five percent food and beverage tax to make up for that?
Right, right, yeah, there would be, if we eliminated both the electric and gas and implemented food and beverage, there would be, if you will, a hole to make up for.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think you could, they're not mutually exclusive. But these are, these are hard numbers, you've got forty-three businesses here, you could actually take a look at those forty-three businesses and find out what their sales are, and you could say, okay, here's your sales, if we taxed you this amount, this would be X dollars to the village, and this would be the amount that your gas bill would go down. So this would be the net impact on that village, or that business. We could do that, if it takes some work.
Ideally, we'd like to, but we can't get that information.
You can from the owners, business owners.
They're willing to give it up, yeah.
Well, I think it's a good idea to eliminate the utility tax, the gas utility tax. I think keeping the electric utility tax, or the electric utility tax is, you know, acceptable, I think there's minimal impact on the residents. Gas tax is just, some residents pay three or four dollars a month, and some residents pay forty or fifty dollars a month. I mean, there's a big range there, and I think it's very unfair to make some residents just pay so much more than others. Is there a way to just put a fee on the gas bill instead of charging by terms? Like a flat fee, like five dollars a month, or 10 dollars a month, or?
We'd have to look into that.
No.
Typically, I think with the gas utility tax, it's a percentage basis, but we'll have to verify that.
And I've also looked at, like in Hanover Park and Streamwood, when it comes to kilowatt-hours used on their electric bills, if you look at the Bartlett, once you reach 48,000 kilowatts, Bartlett's at nine cents. If you look at Hanover Park and Streamwood, they pay 29 cents, and Hanover Park pays 40 cents per kilowatt hour used, once you reach the 48,000 limit, the 48,000 kilowatt hour limit. So I think that's something else we could actually look at to try to cut the gas utility tax in favor of raising it more in line to what our neighboring communities have.
So you then would propose that we tax, we encourage people to use less electricity?
Correct.
So it would be kind of graduated?
And this would be, this would be more geared towards businesses rather than residents, because residents do not hit the 48,000 kilowatt hours per month. And if we eliminate their gas tax, it kind of evens out for them.
I would really like to see what the increase, this fledgling economy, what we're going to be seeing over the next six months to a year, what we could predict. You know, we know it's increasing somewhat, I know it's pragmatic, but when we're talking about cutting things like this and changing things up, we got to, we got to weigh our decision here with some ways to balance that out.
You know, before staff goes through that exercise, I would like to interject that right now, I, I would be hard-pressed to put another tax on the businesses. I think some of the, I know there's several businesses that are operating on a one and two percent.
Margin.
Profit margin.
Profit margin. And I just don't think the timing on this is right. I think perhaps in a year, maybe two, we could, we could look at this replacement. But I just think it would be, we got a lot of businesses that are just, just hanging on, and, and to dump this in their laps, not a very nice term, but to change this so that the, the burden is on the businessman, I just, I just don't have a good feeling about it right now. I wonder if any of, any of the other trustees feel that way?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, the other thing that, you know, I'm always frightened of is, any changes we make now, it's, you know, like, I agree with, with Mayor Wallace, you know, if we could just project what may, I know it's an unknown, but if we had some idea of what would be occurring, and I don't know, none of us know what's going to happen at Springfield. If they freeze our property taxes for two consecutive years, what's that going to do to this village?
Well, I can tell you that we're starting the property tax levy process.
I'm sorry?
I can tell you that we're going to start the property tax levy process, and our first projection or our first proposal to the village board will be to keep it flat for the general levy.
Yeah. What happens if they cut our sales tax revenue by 50%?
It's very problematic.
I mean?
Income tax.
I don't think we should, we can jump into this, it's something that we have to, you know, proceed very cautiously. We could be cutting our own throat.
Right. You could always implement it again.
That's true, too.
I think, I think I look at the residents, and there's people in this village that live on a fixed income.
Yeah, I'm, I understand.
Fixed income. And you're looking at a tax, a utility tax, that is, it's unfair, it is unfair for our residents. And if you look at a tax on a food and beverage, that's a luxury. People choose to go out to drink and eat. And if you spend a hundred dollars, you're being taxed, at three percent, it's three dollars. Are you going to notice three dollars on a hundred dollar bill? No.
My wife would.
So, I don't think many residents would see that. It's, it's, you don't open their bill and it doesn't slap them in the face. And when you go out to eat, you expect to pay. And this is my opinion.
I appreciate your position, but I think we have to look, we have to look at the position of the businesses in town. If a business closes up, and I don't have any figures or numbers to back up my statement, but if, if a business closes up, it takes a long time for that space to reopen in, in a retail setting. And it's just, I, I do appreciate what you're trying to do, but I just can't see burdening the businesses any further than we already do. They pay the utility tax as well.
Yeah. When Elgin first wanted to implement a, a food and beverage tax, some of the business owners came out, and they said the exact same thing. They're still in business today. So I don't think it's, it's something that people tend to, you know, I'm not going to go there because there's a three percent tax. People don't look at it that way.
I'd rather hold that, you know, the, the business, food and beverage tax, I'd rather hold that, you know, as a, maybe we could, right now, than to eliminate the utility tax, and then have to go back to the residents and say, oh, by the way, we have to reinstate this tax.
And I, I don't?
I think that's, I think we're, you're looking for a lot of improvement on that.
It seems to me that we're very early in this process, and I think we can all commit to a couple of principles, sorry, I think we can all commit to a couple of principles. One, we want to lessen the burden on the taxpayers.
Correct.
Whatever form that, that is. You know, we talk about, well, we don't want to tax businesses, we don't want to tax the individuals. I think sometimes that's a distinction without a difference, you know, I favor the people, so, I favor businesses, so, so there you go. But I think, I think we need to commit to reducing the tax burden on people, I think part of that is being fiscally conservative. We've worked very hard during the budget process, and I know I really put Jeff through the wringer for two years, trying to get rid of as much of the budget as is humanly possible, and you know, sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not, but I think going forward, we have to be committed to trying to make cuts, like, you know, Mr. Dinges was just talking about this evening, and exploring our different options. And trustee Danny, your, your point is very well taken. If the state cuts our, our share of the, the income tax, well, or the sales tax, well, we're going to be in some deep trouble, so you're going to start seeing a lot more yeses in this chart.
Yeah.
You know, at the same time, I'm opposed to utility tax.
Yeah.
I ran on that, and I continue to be opposed to the utility taxes. If we're going to, it seems to me, financially, I don't know how this works, but if we're going to cut electric, we should also just look at cutting gas and try to keep it even and on parity, and I suppose there's lots of ins and outs there, I know that the revenue generated isn't equal, but the fact that we're talking about this and studying this, I think this is a good thing, and we should continue to do it, and hopefully we'll come up with some ways to, to cut.
I don't think there's any doubt that it still deserves discussion, it shouldn't be scrapped at all. But you know, one of the other things that, you know, I keep thinking about when we sat, we were sitting out there, Adam and I were out there when you guys were going through the budget meetings and whatnot, and I saw, you know, the cuts and all the efforts that you made, you know, to keep the budget as reduced as it is, and did an outstanding job. And yes, you did put Jeff through the wringer. But, but what, you know, what frightens me, and I don't have an answer for this, is sooner or later, it's, we're going to have to pay the pipe, or some of these things that we've cut, we're going to have to go out and make those expenditures.
Right.
And I'm wondering, you know, where is that going to come from?
Right.
As far as trying to, I mean, this, this information that Jeff's given us, I'm, I'm actually quite proud of the village and the fact that we probably tax people less than any other village around. And so I, I get it that we don't want to tax people more, but we're already taxing them less than any other village around, and that's something to be commended.
And Adam is right, you know, there are people that are living, you know, they're not the best off, and?
That's true.
To trustees?
But then again, that's a small percentage in the, in Bartlett itself, I mean, if you start looking at the median income in Bartlett, it's not like in the poverty level.
But I'm still, you know?
I think there's a lot of people struggling.
There's people struggling, but we certainly have a, a higher median income in Bartlett statistically.
To trustee Hopkins' point, spoke about this earlier, but it, some, some folks that have the older houses, right, that gas just seems to flow through, and we already have the rebate for the seniors, correct? So the ones that are on fixed income, we could potentially make a better, a bigger adjustment for that, for the fixed income folks, correct? And, and is there a way that you can do it, do this, create this, the gas portion of this tax by age of home?
No.
There isn't?
No, because, there's probably credits out there. I don't know where, but I've heard of that before, but the, the state statute on gas utility tax is pretty clear on how you implement it.
Okay. So is there, could we actually look at, the one, number one thing that he had mentioned was the fixed income folks, is that something that's illegal? We can, we can actually take a look at increasing our?
A fixed fee?
No, increasing our rebate for those folks that we already give them.
We could take a look at that.
Yeah.
You need to clarify fixed income, okay, and the total salary?
Because right now, we just do seniors, right, seniors?
Correct.
But the total revenue that comes in on an annual basis, you could be on a fixed income and, you know, still be earning, you know, thousands of dollars, you know. I know at the township, they see people coming in, you know, where they're living on just their social security, and their social security is like $15,000 a year, you know, so if we're saying fixed income, I think that you need to define what the total income of the family of, of coming in on an annual basis would be, if, if that's even possible.
Well, I think you just go by seniors. If they, if they've done well for themselves and they get a rebate, they get a rebate. If they, if they're, if they're struggling a little bit more, they get a rebate, it's senior.
I'm not, if we're talking about?
Go ahead.
We're not talking about asking people to prove how much they make, are we?
No, no, that's what I'm getting, that's what I get.
Yeah, because that's, I'm not, I'm definitely opposed to that, yeah.
We're so far afield from what the original question was.
Not necessarily.
But we're talking about how to determine fixed income and, and all this other stuff. And I, I think if, if you want to look at proposed, proposed figures, and you feel that the staff doesn't have enough to do, then let's go ahead and look at that, and then we can talk about fixed income and, and all that other stuff.
Well, I was more or less on the lines, I think I probably mentioned fixed income, and what I meant to say was a senior rebate. So, I mean, the senior rebate may be able to be adjusted.
Certainly can.
So those are the folks that, we could look into doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak for trustee Hopkins, but I don't think that's the direction you wanted to go in.
Well, obviously, my direction is to eliminate the gas utility. And I think that if we could look at ways in our kilowatt-hours used for businesses or residents, whoever uses, you know, 48,000 or 50,000 kilowatt-hours, and put that number more in line with our neighbors, I think, I think we need to really look at that number.
The kilowatt-hours is, is all defined by state statute.
I understand that, and Hanover Park is well under that, the state statute, I think, for 40,000?
We didn't max out a rate, though. We're, we're, we have a very low rate for the electric tax. We're nowhere, we didn't max that out at all. In fact, when we were at 600,000, we weren't maxed out at all. So those other communities are probably maxed out in the, in the kilowatt-hour rate that they charge, we're very low.
I, I understand that, and I would like to look at bumping that percentage up, bump that number up, and see where we're at, and at least try to cut our gas utility tax, you know? I, I think that putting the burden on the residents is bad, and I think this helps shift. And we really need to look at that number, because I look at it, and Bartlett charges, or we, our tax, we charge nine cents for 48,000, anything over 48,000 kilowatt-hours, and Hanover Park charges 40 cents? That's a huge difference there.
Right, but we had, we had to back into it. We said we want to, at first, we want to generate 600,000 dollars, and then the state says, well, this is your rate to generate that amount of money, and then when we wanted to cut it 300,000, we had to back into the rate, and the state says, this is now the kilowatt-hours that are going to be charged, and it's on a tiered basis.
I think that's a way more responsible way to do it.
But I think we can, they don't make that tier, because Streamwood and Hanover Park, they're, they're completely different. All, all the numbers, they don't add up on a percentage base.
I can show you the state statute, how it's, how it's written and how they charge. It's, it's all defined by kilowatt-hours for the state, it's?
Oh, absolutely.
It's very complex.
It didn't seem that complex when I was reading the village code in Streamwood and Hanover Park. It, it seems like you can adjust, and I don't know if our village attorney could chime in on this and, and find out if we just take the 48,000 or the 50,000 kilowatt-hours and say, I'm going to charge 40 cents?
I wasn't aware that we could adjust that ourselves.
I knew it was that.
But we can look into that, honestly.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it would help me, too, to understand what, what are the rates for a lot of other communities?
Yeah.
And how, how their rate structures are set up.
And what role that we would play in that.
And I think, you know, let's, let's look at the, the rates for gas, too, because if you're proposing sort of a balancing type of arrangement, let's, let's have some information before us, before we, and I, and I know trustee Erns, I'm not trying to give him more work to do, but just to help me kind of get my mind around it, I think that'd be helpful. And it's appreciated, by the way.
We'd be happy.
The work is appreciated.
I think that's it. Is that all for you, chairman Danny?
Yes, that's enough.
All right. Next item we have on our committee agenda this evening is under planning and zoning for chairman Rankin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have zoning ordinance, fence text amendment. Jim, why don't I turn it over to you?
Thank you, trustee Rankin. This is a text amendment that was generated by the zoning board of appeals, of which we have a couple of members here tonight, kind of as a result of the request for fence variations and some of the times the difficulty that are, that we face, or that the zoning board faces when there are fence variations applied for. It was proposed a number of years ago, but essentially, what the proposal is, is to go to a four-foot-high fence in the corner side and front yard, and I've just given, showing some of the diagrams we have in the zoning ordinance. showing some of the diagrams we have in the zoning ordinance for it. It's not that of an intrusive increase, and we do sometimes convince people to, to try to go to a smaller fence when they're, when they're asking for the five or six footers that are not desirable in the front and corner side yard, and I've shown some examples of them. The zoning board felt after a couple of somewhat contentious and lengthy zoning variation cases that we had recently for the five footers to propose this amendment. We drafted it at their request and have brought it to you for discussion, and if you desire to do that, move it on to the zoning board for a public hearing on the matter. We get a lot of requests for these types of fences and are told that three foot is the limit. You see a lot of three footers around, and then the people that don't want them, they'll typically ask for something even bigger, and then we go through that variance request. We think it'll eliminate some of the fence variations, because the four-foot fence is pretty effective in keeping dogs and children inside the yard. Not many little kids can jump over a four-foot fence, dogs maybe, depends on the kind of dog.
Almost every dog can jump over a three foot, though.
Almost every dog can jump over a three foot. You're right.
I've been looking at the case numbers from '91 all the way up to 2015, and in the majority of cases, the five-foot fence has always been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I need to ask a question. How many times do you guys get called out to have a meeting just for a variation on a fence height that you approve? And that's the only item on the agenda?
It, there are a couple. You know, mostly this summer, the variations were fences. There wasn't, there wasn't too much else on that agenda, so. But in the couple of cases that we had, if you recall, the last one we did, it went kind of back and forth a couple of times between the zoning board. They was denied, petition revised as petition moved it back off the yard. Second time around, the zoning board recommended approval, and we finally granted it, but it took most of the summer. And we've, we had that similar case last, last summer, too.
Let me ask you this. Do you have any concerns about increasing the height of the fence in the front corners, or the corner side yard with vision clearance? I mean, it seems to me that that's going to be one of the biggest issues, is vision clearance.
Vision clearance would still hold, hold true, and you're right, that is, that is particularly when you have, like, the intersection, like, that's up there now. We tend to define, we don't tend to define, we do define the vision clearance triangle as 35 feet. So at this intersection, you know, they would have to meet that 35-foot setback. In these cases, what we would say is that you would have to either lower the fence or what some people do is they kind of cut the corner. If it's extremely impeding the vision, they have to cut that kind of corner area. We, and if you go around town, you'll see a few instances where, particularly, I can tell you at Mayflower and Struckman, that fence. There's also one at Falmore and Newport. Those fences, because of the street curve and the angle, they cut them back, and that's what we would continue to do. Because you, we wouldn't eliminate the vision clearance triangle from this, from the ordinance.
So I'm very concerned about that. We just had a fence variance in here along Struckman.
Right.
And, you know, when it's your, when it's your side yard and it's on a busy street like Struckman, that's one thing, but if somebody wanted to put a four-foot fence in front of my neighbor's house who's on the corner, I think it'd be problematic, because the kids and dogs and cars and, people drive like maniacs everywhere.
Right.
So, you know, I'm very hesitant to increase the height of the fence. I want to make sure the doggies are safe, but.
We, we're not proposing to.
Joggers, and joggers, and joggers.
We're not proposing to eliminate that vision clearance. That still would hold, hold true on, even on these higher fences.
What's that?
Foot fence.
Right.
You know, would impede the vision triangle. A four-foot fence also would satisfy the barrier requirement for a pool, and a lot of people right now, we have a lot of pools in town, and they have to have, like, two fences. One on the building setback line of a four-foot or six, and then they put another three-foot fence out, you know, so it would eliminate a lot of those concerns of different heights and fences around pools. So the four-foot fence would satisfy the barrier requirement for pool safety as well.
That's a good point, Brian. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have no problem.
I just have one comment. I think that the ordinance is antiquated and it needs to be rewritten, easy for me to say. And I would suggest that it does go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a public hearing.
Yep.
Everybody in agreement?
They were all in agreement with that.
One of the things that I'd like the board to take a look at is the composition of the fences in the front yard, because, you know, looking at the photographs you provided to us, sort of the open format seemed to be, they're more likely to preserve vision versus, you know, board on board. So I don't know if that's something that we could hear, hear some more about.
Something that they would like to look at, too? They've talked about, like, the, these particular styles as opposed to, as opposed to the more solid type fence.
Right, because I hate to tell somebody.
Castle.
But at the same time.
It's a brick wall castle.
Right.
We got to make sure people are safe.
Yeah.
We'll have them do that. Thank you.
And just from a resident's standpoint, if the police can drive by and look and actually see in the yard, it helps, versus not be able to see in the yard at all.
Right, right.
All right.
Well, that's, that's all we have for planning and zoning this evening.
Very good. Before we adjourn, I'd just publicly thank the former village attorney for Winnetka, Catherine Janega. Thank you. Janega?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here and substituting for Mr. Maras.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. Moved by Trustee Ranky, second by Trustee Aaron's with a clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.